...for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Donald Shalou and Jesse Andre. Jesse Andre served as the Assistant Civil Defense Director in town for several years, quite a while ago, because that civil defense title has since been done away with, and we have other titles that would handle that type of situation. But Mr. Andre did live in town and did serve the town. Don Shalou lived on Pine Street. His wife worked with me at Dyton Rehoboth for many years, and Don was also our landfill transfer station attendant for a number of years. So I would like to ask for a moment Thank you.
Not sympathy to their families.
Okay, as usual, our first order of business is public input.
Mr. Burke.
President of Public.
Good to see everybody.
Why don't you tell us who you are?
Oh, Thomas Burke, roommate there, number 50.
Oh, no, we stopped counting.
We were approaching triple digits.
I don't have to go up all the way down here. I was just wondering, I haven't seen you for a couple of weeks, but I have been watching. You had some good meetings here. Any update on the town administrator, interested in that? I'd like to, any updates on the, I haven't read the agenda yet, police department complex thing, and I'm just curious if you had, we're going to schedule interviews on the fire chief.
Okay.
That's three of those.
I can ask three of those pretty quickly. As far as the town administrator goes, we hired a firm, they helped recruit a town administrator, and they talked to like all three of us already. We've developed a job description, which they have, and they're putting together an advertising, and that will be published very shortly. And they actually have a couple, told me today, as a couple candidates that were interested, so.
I think it's already advertised.
I think it is, yeah.
So we're moving along on that. Yeah, feel pretty good about it.
And then even you, it's a full.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, I spoke to someone at Municipal Resources today.
Did I? Yep.
No, they send emails periodically to the board.
The police station is moving along very well, great, yeah. They advertised one last week, put it out to bid last week, and I think the bid closing is somewhere in August 9th.
That's the sub bids.
Correct.
And it should be awarded.
Two weeks later, the general contract bids.
So that's moving right along. A lot of people have asked about that, so I'm glad you brought it up.
I know that they have to go, it's very meticulous, every line has to be gone over.
Yep, correct. What was the third thing?
Just wanted to see, are they going to do interviews for the possible fire chief?
Oh, yes. We have a number of applicants for the fire chief. I haven't looked at them yet. I think both Brett and Nancy have glanced at them, so we got to look at them. The other thing which I think I would like to do is get a fire chief from another town to come in and kind of give us a hand, but we need to look through the applications first so we don't ask for somebody that comes from the same town. So we expect to get on that strongly next week, probably.
When they do interviews for police or fire, I've seen in my experience that they do bring in somebody outside that has experience, and it helps.
Yeah, what do we know?
To be part of the panel.
What do we know about fire, really? So anyway, so that's where we are with those things.
We had a very good response, a large number. I couldn't believe going through them, it was like, and like Brett said, scanned them briefly, because it's a lot to read, but good candidates.
You know, while we're talking about public input type stuff, I just wanted to talk about the auction that the town had last week, and the process of getting ready for the auction of land that the town has that no longer has use for. It started about a year ago with the Land Use Committee. The Land Use Committee looked at all the properties that the town owns and identified a number of them that, and in conjunction with all the other committees, planning, conservation, CPC, pretty much all of them would be involved. Anyways, it was ten items, ten properties that were on the auction list. Six of them were sold at auction. You know, I just want to maybe go down these pretty quickly. The former Van Geisen Hall, that was auctioned at $50,000. The building, they're going to take the building down, and I'm not sure what he has planned for that. The William Street property, 12.4 acre land parcel for $20,000. There was another William Street, 8.29 acres for $15,000. There's two lots on Hart Street that went for $15,000. There was two lots on, and that was a total of 12.8 acres, two on, one on Wellington and one on Smith that went as a package for $19,000, and then one on Brook Street for $7,008 acres. So it was very successful. I think the total was $129,000.
$126.
$126 that came into the town coffers, so.
And it covered, the goal was at least the taxes, which were $108,000, and we still have some left that we could sell. So that was good.
Yeah, and these were properties like, for example, there might have been a house lot that didn't connect to anything else, the town had no use for, and that kind of, and the Van Geisen Hall's been a long time, but that was agreed at town meeting to dispose of that. So, anyway, it was very successful, and a lot of people worked hard on it, Mary Hathaway in particular. So if you see Mary, thank her for her hard work.
It was very interesting. I'd never been to one, and I kind of peeked in from the foyer, but it was interesting to see how it was conducted and, you know, how they actually did a land auction.
I don't, my one question is, why do we have to sell the land? Like, why can't we just keep it?
We don't have to sell it.
So why do we?
Because.
Get it on the tax rolls.
And we have no use for it.
But we could, we could have made a garden.
No, no, some of it's landlocked, you can't get to it.
I have legs, I can walk.
No, you can't cross someone's property, it's landlocked. So in some instances, when you do, when you have landlocked, you're hoping one of the abudders will buy it to increase their property holdings.
And ideally, you hope nobody's going to build a house on it, because that's going to cost us more in services than we'll get.
Over time.
This committee that Jack talked about, that was involved with this, that was actually created in 2000, I'm going to say '06, because I wasn't, I was on the Finance Committee when that came up. And so over the years, after they did all the initial work, they would review it periodically, and this is the second auction we've had. And I think Dave Neely is the only original member of that committee that's left, but it's been around for years, and they've done a good job.
And I think there's still an opening for a member on that, and it's a very interesting committee. I chaired that committee for a time, and it's very interesting, you really get to know the town and where the property is. And going back to Brett's comment, there was still property out there that you could probably do what you're talking about, but we need that kind of input. I don't think we ever talked about the community garden type thing, but.
We actually did have a couple of locations, because I mentioned that to Mr. Ferry, and he said, yes, we did, but things didn't pan out, but I don't think we sold that land either, but.
And the Open Space Committee is also looking at some of this land and seeing how, you know, if we had a piece of property that was here and another one over here, and we thought we maybe could connect them, then that was kept, anyways.
Well, and we're going to do the, not us, but the Open Space Committee.
Yes, right.
I suspect the Planning Board will come up with like an open space plan.
Right, yep.
And the other thing that's happened over the years is the town has acquired land. For example, almost all of Broad Cove belongs to the town of Dyton, because the last chunk the Conservation Commission bought, it's, it will forever be the way it is right now in its natural state, and, you know, we get the trails and all that, but there have been pieces of the property that the town has purchased for open space, in addition to what we've already protected.
Anyways, that was very positive. Okay, let's move on to old business. Point member to the 40B Committee?
No.
No? Because we have a 40B Committee, and it's a requirement, so we have a number of appointments here, and I'll just read them off. Heidi Back, who works down in planning.
Baki.
Excuse me.
She won't know.
So that is one appointee, potential appointee. And then we have Tom Piers, who's also on planning as an appointee. And then we have Alice Souza, who runs our primetime as an appointee. Ken Pacico, who's on zoning, but also on the 40B Committee. And then Charlie Mello, also 40B.
And he's from Conservation.
Conservation. So I want to make a motion to appoint those members.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint the following individuals to the 40B Committee. Charles Mello, Kenneth Pacico, Alice Souza, Thomas J. Piers, and Heidi Baki.
For discussion?
I just, so I know that it's a state requirement that we have the committee, but that committee didn't meet last year.
Right.
So is there, like, why would they have a require, I won't even ask it, but why do they have a requirement to have the committee but not a requirement?
This committee, this committee was formed because it has to be done, and the first task of this committee was to develop a housing plan. And then, as time, and I think it was, I know Tom Piers was very involved. And then, there was a case where part of our 40B plan to meet the 10% requirement, there was, it did go to court, and we were represented by Attorney Mitchell. And she actually prevailed, and there was some actual, I don't know if the law had changed, but certainly the interpretation of the judge who heard it, it was, I would say, made a record. So that was very important, but we are required to have this, there has to be some oversight, and the housing plan periodically has to be revised and updated, so that may be what they're going to deal with.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Yeah, I want to back up to public info for a minute, you know, because I just thought of something. In the last week, we've had a couple of things came over email or Facebook, where people were asking about things. One was the condition of the porta-johns over here by the pavilion. Another was about plastic bags, and I just want to commend the people that brought those issues forward, because they're the kind of things, unless we have the input and somebody comments about it, we don't know it's a problem. So I just want to commend the people that did that, and I want to encourage people, if you have an issue or you think there's something we should be more aware of, don't assume we know. We don't know, we don't know, so please come to us and let us know, so.
Well, the other thing is, we, Select Mingular is, you know, not really herself on Facebook. You, you know, you're busy. I don't check the random Facebook Dyton groups, so, you know, venting or asking a question on there, we're probably not going to see it. So if you want to contact us, please, you know, call, email, Facebook message me directly, so I actually will check it and receive it in my inbox, and we will absolutely get back to you.
And I want to commend Rosalind Gracie, who works downstairs for the Health Department. The issue about the porta-john over here came in this afternoon, and she was on it in about half an hour and resolved it, so, you know, people up here really are listening to what you say, so.
And I know Ros, Ms. Gracie has had a lot of questions come into, a bulk of them, because I track them have come in through the Board of Health, that's who most people are contacting, and she gets back to them within an hour. I mean, it's fantastic, so thank you so much, Ros.
Another example of a great employee, one of our great employees. Okay.
And if you have an issue and you're not sure which board it should be, just send it to the Selectment.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
We'll root it out.
Me personally, not Karen.
Any one of us.
Give her a break.
Okay, let's get back to the agenda. Point Linda, I mean Laura Maderas to the Cable Committee.
Thank you.
Okay, this is for the appointment of Laura Maderas to the Cable Television Committee. She's working down there tonight, Laura, we appreciate it. And she volunteered for this, and she has a, what do we have here? You have excellent communication skills, and I think you have a bachelor's degree in Communication and Media Studies, so be very useful to the Cable Committee.
Is she the only woman we have on the commission?
Julie's down there.
Oh, Julie's down there, okay. For the longest time, the only person we had was Mrs. Perry.
For a very long time, we had, you know, we didn't have enough help down in the cable, and it was very difficult on the folks who are down. And I think we have a pretty good staff, so hopefully they'll get a little break, maybe take a week off here and there, so.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Laura Maderas to the Cable Television Committee.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Me.
I'm looking at the, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we move on, I just wanted to actually commend you, Cable. I was looking online the other day, we actually, Select Mingular, you were there for the beginning. It has been over one year since we started our YouTube channel, and we have over 8,000 views, so people are actually watching, which is absolutely incredible.
We have a correspondence from William Mendoza.
Thank you.
I think this is important, to read Mr. Mendoza's letter to us, and the reason for that is we want to be totally open with what's going on and know that we're addressing things that people have concern about. So let me read it. "I, William Mendoza, attended the auction on Tuesday, July 18, 2017. I feel that the land I was bidding on at Zero Hart Street was sold illegally. The reason for this is that the auctioneer stated at the beginning of the auction that you needed either a $1,000, $5,000, $10,000 deposit on each piece of property you wanted to bid on prior to the start of the auction. The gentleman who won the bid, however, did not, however, have a deposit on this parcel stated above. The auctioneer was notified by one of his colleagues that he did not have a deposit on this parcel, and then the gentleman stated that he had a check in his pocket and handed to the auctioneer. For this reason, I feel that this was an illegal sale of land, and would appreciate this to be viewed by Mary Hathaway and the town." So we took that, and from that, we sent it to our attorney, who was handling the auction, and he gave an opinion. And his opinion, basically, I'm not going to read the whole thing, was that although the gentleman did not hand the auctioneer the check prior to the, to that piece of property being auctioned off, excuse me, that the auction was conducted in an open, professional manner, giving every participant the opportunity to make a deliberate bid, and I think basically he's saying it was kind of an administrative thing, but he didn't, the lawyer didn't feel that anybody was misled or anybody was given an unfair advantage.
Do these people represent the people who did the auction?
They represent us.
This is the legal counsel that handles, yes, yes.
So what he, his statement is, this is a legal opinion, after attending the auction, reviewing Mr. Mendoza's reasoning, is my opinion that this statement, that his statement that the sale was illegal is without any merit. And so Mr. Mendoza was provided a copy of that, and I'm not sure what, if he could do anything further, but just wanted to let people know that we address issues that people bring to us, and we got a legal opinion on this, so it wasn't just swept away.
It's an open auction, it comes to the auction. What was the process?
Well, the auction, you're required to, the rules of an auction like this, you're required to bring a check.
Oh, yes, okay.
And provide, and provide that cashier's check for each piece of property you're going to bid on.
Oh, I see.
And in this case, the gentleman that got the bid didn't give it to the auctioneer before the piece of property came up.
Oh.
But he had the check, so it wasn't like he had, it was a very technical thing, and he really didn't give anybody an unfair advantage or disadvantage for that matter, so, anyway. Okay. Appoint Daniel Ajou to the Green Community Grant Committee. A lot of appointments, you have been involved in that committee.
We have a, do we have his resume or anything?
Oh, I have his resume.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. We have an application from Mr. Daniel Ajou, who actually, as I understand, recently moved to Dyson. His grandparents live on Oak Grove or in Oak Grove, and he has an interest in becoming a green community. And he has a background in speech and communication. I know he is heavily involved with the Massachusetts Air Force National Guard and their security forces, and he's also had experience as an executive assistant, and so, and a lot of volunteering experience. So all in all, I think that, you know, he would be a solid addition to the Committee, to the Green Communities Grant Committee. So I will make the motion that we appoint Daniel Ajou to the Green Communities Grant Committee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, and thank you for volunteering, Daniel.
Absolutely.
And come and take your oath.
Yes, yeah, come and take your oath, right. Yeah, everybody, come and take your oath. Contract for yearly auditing services? Okay, this is a contract for services for our annual audit, and this agreement that we're going to execute another year on was a three-year, was initially a three-year agreement, but we have to contract each year. So the contract is with Roselli, Clark and Associates, 500 West Cummings Park Suite 4,000 in Wurman, Mass. And that's who we have contracted with the last year, and we intend to contract with them again. So if anybody wants to add.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we award the contract for the 2017 to 2018 annual audit to Roselli, Clark and Associates.
Second.
Okay, let me just, and just so you know, the total payment for this is $18,500, which in my experience is a pretty reasonable cost for a contract. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that the annual audit that you pick up every year?
No, this is, this is the whole, this is a town audit.
As I understand, Select Mingular, correct me if I'm wrong, the department-specific audit is part of that $18,000.
Yes, yes. But this is, the big one is the one that takes place first to meet the DOL requirements.
Question.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, yearly contract for cleaning services. Okay, this is, this is our contract for cleaning of Town Hall and Dyton Police Station, and we've had this contract with this group for a couple of years?
Oh, many years.
Many, many years.
Many years.
And the contract ran out the end of, end of June, and so we're looking at renewing the contract for an additional year. We, we will, we probably should have gone out on bid for this, because it's been the same contract for quite some time, but I don't know what your pleasure is, whether you, I know Nancy had a vote, I think we should contact some other company.
They were here in, excuse me, they were here in 2007, I don't know when they started.
So my thought is, at this point.
I don't know if this is an increase.
There was not an increase.
It's the same, is they getting right now?
Yep. So my thought is, we probably ought to renew this for this year going into 2018, and then next year we would make a note to go out with a bid, to get bids on.
Yeah, just something for comparison. I'll make that motion to award it to MNS for Fiscal 18.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Do we have a letter from Tom? Mind if I read this, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, can get it right.
I'm going to write it. This is dated July 24, 2017. Dear Board of Selectment, please consider this my resignation as a representative from the Planning Board to the CPC as of August 1, 2017. At the Planning Board's meeting in June, the Board voted to accept my resignation as representative of the Planning Board to the CPC, and appoint Robert Woods to represent the Planning Board on the Community Preservation Committee. Thank you. Thomas Piers. Are you accepting entertaining motions, Mr. Chairman? At this time, I will make a motion to accept Mr. Piers' resignation as a representative from the Planning Board to the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear, because it's a little confusing.
It is.
That Tom Piers is not resigning from the Planning Board, he's only resigning from his position as the representative to the Community Preservation Committee, so.
He will still be on the Planning Board.
Yeah, right. Not going anywhere. So, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you so much, Mr. Piers.
Now we need to fill his seat.
Oh, those are tough boots.
He wears flip flops.
Those are tough flip flops to fill.
Want to give this one her?
Yeah, absolutely. So at this time, I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Robert Woods, who is also on the Planning Board, to the Community Preservation Committee as the Planning Board Representative.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Right-of-entry forms for Center Street Sidewalk Project.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
You want to explain what this is?
Yeah. To those property owners on Center Street, the good news is, tonight we have the forms ready for your signature, and once these are executed, and Karen will be in touch with you to have you come in, and she has all the documents you need to sign, once these are executed, you will be given your check. And the acquisition of your property as a permanent easement will be recorded at the Registry of Deeds after Town Council finishes the order of taking and this Board votes it. So we're at the point of payment. The other thing I want to advise Board members of is that, in addition to the right-of-entry forms, when I make the motion, I am going to include the authorization, not only for the Chairman to sign the right-of-entry forms, but also any other forms relative to the Center Street Sidewalk Project. The only thing that has to come back for a vote now will be the order of taking, and we will follow this up. Everything else has been taken care of, and there are some documents currently being reviewed by Town Council, but they are, I'll call them standard documents, it's nothing unusual, they don't involve money. But I will make a motion that we authorize the Chairman to sign the right-of-entry forms and any other forms relative to the Center Street Sidewalk Project.
I will second that.
Any further discussion?
The only other thing I will say is, the next thing we have to do, because we're dealing with the county, the document, the right-of-entry form for the county, and one other document that they, that's on the draft stage, will be forwarded to the County Commissioners for action.
Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Again, I just want to thank you, Select Mingular, for keeping on top of this and for working close with Mr. Ferry on the Highway Department.
We're all going to look forward to walking down that sidewalk.
We're going to let you go first.
Oh, thanks. It'll probably be cold and miserable and raining.
See if there's a sinkhole underneath it.
You're right. The railroad bridge, the culvert, whatever that is.
Okay, we've got a number of announcements here, I guess I'll do a couple of them. The person who'd been our. The, the person who'd been our CEO of weights and measures for many, many years had resigned, so there's an opening for a CEO of weights and measures in the town of Dyton. If you're interested in that position, you can contact the Board of Selectmen's Office for more information. The, the other thing is, the town clerk, last couple of meetings ago, we appointed, I don't know, a lot of people to a lot of different boards.
Hundreds.
Hundreds, yeah. And it didn't go bad, but now, what we need to do is make sure that if you were appointed to one of those boards, that you come up and see the town clerk and get sworn in, because you can't function on those boards without that. And if you've been appointed to a board that you're really no longer interested in, then-
Please let us know.
Let the town clerk know that, so we, we can get someone else in there, so. But I want to, again, I want to thank all of the people that are serving on all of these numerous boards, because that's what makes the town work, and that's what gets people involved, and so, we can, we can manage our town the way we want to manage our town, so. I appreciate all that, of all your, all your time you put into that. Okay, the hiring of two new full-time firefighters, we-
Do you mind if I read these, Mr. Chairman?
Go for it.
Okay, so, I have two, do you want me to read both, or just make the announcement? I'll read both, okay. It's exciting. Okay, so, this is July, dated July 10th, better late than never, gentlemen, 2017. It is addressed to Mr. Matthew Silva. It says, "Congratulations. With your successful completion of all pre-employment requirements, the Dyton Fire Department is pleased to offer you the position of full-time firefighter/paramedic. At your earliest convenience, notify me of your start date. Understand that you must attend the Massachusetts Firefighting Recruit Academy. Again, congratulations, and I look forward to hearing back from you. Respectfully, Christopher J. McGee, Dyton Fire Department, Acting Fire Chief." So, congratulations, Mr. Silva. Now, this one, this gentleman, Mr. Eric Gagnon, is a Dyton resident. He had previously been working for the Fall River Fire Department, and now, he's working in the town that he lives in, which is fantastic, I'm sure his family is very happy. This is addressed to Mr. Eric Gagnon, dated July 21st, 2017. "Congratulations. With your successful completion of all pre-employment requirements, the Dyton Fire Department is pleased to offer you the position of full-time firefighter/paramedic." Oh, Christopher, Mr. McGee copied this, okay. "At your earliest convenience, notify me of your start date. We understand that you are pro-board certified already, which means you will not have to attend the Massachusetts Firefighting Recruit Academy. Again, congratulations, and I look forward to hearing back from you. Respectfully, Christopher J. McGee, Dyton Fire Department, Acting Fire Chief." Congratulations, Mr. Gagnon, congratulations, Mr. Silva, and welcome to the department.
Yes, congratulations to both of you, and I think Chief McGee, and former Chief McGee, have done a great job recruiting these two.
Absolutely.
And now, I believe the Fire Department is fully staffed, as approved at the last-
We had two vacancies.
Does it?
Those are these.
That's those two.
Oh, oh, I didn't realize the first, what's Mr. Silva's first name?
Matthew.
Oh, man, okay.
So, anyways, I want to congratulate the two of you for your appointment as firefighters in our town, and also, to Chief McGee for doing such a great job-
For hitting the ground running, good job, Chief.
Chief McGee's.
Chief McGee's, right, so, good job.
Thank you.
Do we need, no, we're not, yeah.
We've got a few other little announcements.
No, we, we get no say in that, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
Somebody want to do the announcement?
A few other announcements, trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's Office, call 508-669-6431 for more information. There are vacancies on the Historical Commission, Land Use Committee, and Capital Outlay Committee, also the Community Preservation Committee, as an opening for a Historical Commission Representative, and a possible opening for an at-large member. The Board of Selectmen is now on their summer meeting schedule, they will be meeting every other week during the summer. Normal meeting schedule will resume on September 6th, 2017.
I just want to add a little thing to that. Last week is the first week we've actually not met on a, on a Wednesday night this summer, so-
We know.
You probably shouldn't have said that.
So, stand, stand by, we, we may, we may or may not be on our summer schedules.
The Dyton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution has new hours going forward, the hours will be 8:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. The next distribution will be August 19th, and this is in the lower level of Town Hall. And the only other thing I want to mention is that, not this weekend, but a week from this weekend, on Saturday, is the Pan Mass Challenge, which means there will be bike riders coming through town, and if you wish to support them, if you go to the website, you can, excuse me, support a team, or contribute monetarily, but you can volunteer services, because the lunch is held at the Regional High School, and everybody goes there, there's literally thousands of people there. And another way to support them is stand along Horton, Williams, Center Street. We will have extra police volunteers, actually, that do the details, the Fire Department, firefighters will be out there, and if you just stand along the way and cheer them on and clap and encourage them, because they got to get to the Maritime Academy in Bourne, it's a long ride, but this is, as everyone knows, this is probably the only one-day fundraiser, it's a bicycle ride, even though it's a two-day, it's a two-day event, it's one day in Dyton, that raises the amount of money that this organization has raised. All volunteers, everything is volunteered, there are no expenses to the actual charity, so, be looking for the bike riders a week from Saturday.
Selectmen Goulart, is, are there, I apologize, are there any road detours or anything because of this?
No, the traffic will flow, even when we only had a one-way bridge, it is so well-coordinated, and the traffic will be slowed up, but fortunately, the roads in Dyton are wide enough that the bikes can travel, and they do try to stay single if it's, it's busy, so, they do a good job.
And what's the charity again?
It's the Pan Mass Challenge, all of the money goes to the Dana Faber slash Jimmy Fund in Boston for research, and they're approaching, I think they're well over half a billion dollars right now, over the years.
It's an incredible fundraiser, and I will say, my, my grandkids were out there last year, and I think they really appreciate the encouragement of people standing out there and clapping and, you know, making signs, whatever, so-
And there are people along the way who handle bottles of water, or things to help.
It's a good way to introduce young people also, to, to charity, and, you know, what people do to, to raise money for people that are not as fortunate as all of us, so.
And also keep, you know, keep the kids in shape and, you know, and active, which is awesome.
And the thing is, the research that's done, anything they discover, it's for humanity, it's shared.
Well, I, I can say this, I will definitely second that, and the reason is, my grandfather, he had a very severe case of lymphoma, and he went to Dana Faber, and he's alive because of that, so, they are, they are incredible, and they are really invaluable in terms of scientific research, so, it's a good, very good cause.
And we want to thank anybody that's listening, that's part of that Pan Mass Challenge, we thank you for what you do.
And my team is known as Heller's on Wheels, and the lead rider who's ridden over twenty-five years is Eric Heller, and he lives in Amherst, and I met Eric many years ago, he works at UMass, and that's how I know him.
How awesome.
Do we have any correspondence?
Nobody contacted us?
In reports, we have any-
Yeah, we got some reports. The cherry sheet information was, was emailed out from the Department of Revenue, and-
Would you explain, would you explain with the cherry sheet?
The cherry sheet is the reimbursement that is to be provided to the cities and towns during far fiscal eighteen. The town of Dyton receives unrestricted general government aid, which means it can be used for anything. That's seven hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for the upcoming year. Our veterans benefits will receive forty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Our VBS, I'm not sure what that is, and elderly, the payment is, excuse me, thirty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. State-owned land, the amount of money that's paid to the town, and I would assume this is the Sweet Knoll Park, three thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, and public libraries, nine thousand and thirteen dollars. So, if you probably heard that the state budget did get passed, the total amount of money for Dyton, for FY eighteen, is eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. That's a thirty-six thousand dollar, thirty-six thousand thirty-two dollar increase over the previous year. So, when you hear them bickering about the state budget, and you keep saying, is this ever going to end? We did get an increase, and I can tell you that the communities in the MMA all fought hard to get an increase in local aid. This does not cover aid to regional school districts, that's a separate cherry sheet, and I don't have that information, but this is just local government. The other thing I want to mention is, yesterday, Bristol County Agricultural School, Principal Assistant Superintendent, two architects, a project manager, and Ken Raven, who was Chairman of the Board of Trustees, came to Town Hall and presented information about the expansion of the Aggie School. They are going to be expanding on both sides of Center Street, they're going to be doing numerous reservation, renovations to Gilbert Hall, which is the main high school building that we're all familiar with. They're going to build a new barn, there will be classrooms on the north side of Center Street, and they anticipate forty percent reimbursement from the Mass School Building. Brett attended that too, so Brett, if you want to give some details?
Absolutely. As you said, not only were they going to construct some new buildings, they were also doing a lot of renovations. You're more of our street expert, but there was some discussion about moving the crosswalk, there was some discussion about traffic, how, how the project would impact traffic, and there was also some discussion about whether or not the, the expansion project, how that would affect the Center Street sidewalk project that you've been working on as well. So, it was a very nice presentation, it was nice to have Mr. Raven there, who is from our state representative, Haddad's office, he's also a Board of Trustee.
He's the Chair.
He's the Chairman, correct. And so, one other nice thing that happened at the meeting is because Mr. Bragger was there, who is the new Assistant Superintendent, and Mr. Dempsey is retired, it was nice to reconnect with Mr. Bragger, so that we have someone there who we can contact if we need anything, if we have any questions.
Somebody we know.
Correct, a friendly, familiar face. So, it was, it was a good meeting, and I'm, I'm very glad I attended, I really am.
The good news is, we, we also reviewed the sidewalk plans, and the work that the town will have done will not impact their expansion plans, and if there has to be a minimal change, we don't anticipate it's going to be a problem. Also, in attendance from the town yesterday were Mr. Ferry, the Superintendent of Streets, Mr. Aggieah, the Building Commissioner, and Acting Chief McGee. So, there was a lot of good discussion about access to buildings for fire purposes, rerouting of buses to deal with traffic. They don't have a lot of flexibility with hours, because some of those students actually have a two-and-a-half-hour bus ride to get to school in the morning.
So, then they get three minutes to go to class.
And, and, oh, and then the other thing is, most of us are familiar with Keith Hall, Keith Hall, which is what we used to call the dormitory. That is not included in the initial project, however, once the project is completed, they are not going to demolish that building, according to the latest plans. What they're going to do is the lower, when I say the lower level, I'll say the street level, which is where the cafeteria is, and the first floor, where the meeting hall is, that will continue to be available space, there will be storage, and also, on the upper floors, they're hoping to bring back the 4-H program that used to be there years ago, the F D A program, the Connection to the Department of Agriculture, that was there years ago, and they said that the space that would be there would also be available meeting space if some public needs to do something with that, so, it, it's going to be interesting, and they expect their, their enrollment to increase from now, it's about four hundred and twenty, to about six hundred and twenty-five, so they're looking at a potential increase, they're planning on two hundred additional students, and there are three programs that they're really focusing on for expansion. So, Dyton, not only Dyton students, but all these students in Bristol County are going to have some additional opportunities, and they will be getting some new school facilities. They will build the new classroom building, north, on the north side of Center Street, so then, the students will be in there when they start to work on the old high school, so.
Yeah, that, that school is a great opportunity for, for kids in our communities, really unbelievable. I know several that have gone through it, and they just, it's really a great opportunity.
Mr. Ferry's our, our, yes, he was. The other thing I'll just mention in brief, some people did mention to me, or ask about the main street drainage project, because they noticed that work has been done along Route 138, and specifically, the area that was called behind Paul Assen's garage, and the concern was, do you know what you're getting into, what's going to happen if you hit this or you hit that? And I assured them that part of the agreement that we have with AstraZeneca is that the area that our employees will be working in are clearly designated, they will receive training that if they find certain conditions, it means stop immediately, because it could be potentially hazardous, dangerous, and if that's the case, the engineer from AstraZeneca will check into it, they will test it, and if there are any hazardous or dangerous substances found, our employees will not work in that area, they will bring in specially-trained individuals to work through the area. So, we have arranged for, and we'll make sure that our employees are protected and will not be exposed to anything that could cause physical problems.
Great, thank you.
Before we move on, I just wanted to touch on one thing that I forgot to mention. One thing I really liked about the proposed project at the Aggie School was, according to the way that they were discussing it, it seems like it will encourage interaction between, you know, the, the group of students who may go on to a four-year college degree, and the kids who may go on and do agricultural work, their own agricultural business, work like that. So, I think that's great, to have more, more diversity and more mingling between the people who have different goals.
Right, and the academic subjects, for the most part, will be on the north side of Center Street where the, the animal buildings are.
Correct.
So, the, those students will also interact, because they'll be in classes together.
And, they're starting a natural resource management plan, which is awesome.
Awesome.
Great, thank you very much for those. Okay, we have a couple of acknowledgements to make, we have a couple of these correspondents from Primetime and the Dyton Council on Aging. And the first is, we pleased, this is from Primetime, we pleased to inform you that Primetime received a donation in the amount of thirty dollars. As usual, all donations are turned over to Town Account and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donation Account. So, I will entertain a motion to acknowledge that, I guess.
So, moved?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the second one is from the Dyton Council on Aging, from Alususa, a one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents donation was made to COA and was deposited, the Town Account and the Town Treasurer have been notified.
I move to acknowledge that donation.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I think it's encouraging that people continue to make donations to our programs, that they see value in, so. Okay, we have some minutes to approve.
Okay.
Brett's got to go clean up the floor now.
We'll wait on that.
Where's that custodial contract?
We need him to start soon.
Okay, so, we have minutes from the Department Head Meeting on June 14th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the Department Head Meeting on June 14th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, we got some warrants to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant for A-18, an amount of eighty thousand five- Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant for A-18 in the amount of $80,583.85. Warrant for B-18 in the amount of $13,130.66. Warrant for C-18 in the amount of $95,270.21. The first one being payroll, and the last two being accounts payable to be approved.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we adjourn, and I'm sure you will be happy to oversee motions for that, I do want to, I have a minute.
Be quick.
Absolutely, I know how to run out the clock. I do want to say, I have been getting a lot of questions about Old Town Hall, I'm not an expert, I'm not over there, I don't know exactly what's going on, so I would, I think if we can agree, we should have the expert, who's the Building Commissioner, come in and answer those questions. Absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe we'll do that next meeting.
Sure.
I want to share...
You only have 30 seconds.
Well, I want to share a personal story with you that I think will be very entertaining. My grandsons were here the last couple of days visiting us, they live in East Greenwich, and we have a new, not a big boat, so they insisted we go out on the river. So, we went down to the launch, and we launched the boat, and we got out there, and we ran around the river, and everything was just great. And then, we went up the river a little bit, and we kind of moseyed around there, we stopped, we had lunch, and then it was time to go home, so I pushed the throttle forward, and it just wasn't going too fast, and this is strange. So, we get to the boat ramp, and I'm cranking the boat up on the trailer, and it was so heavy, I thought, what is going on here? So, we get the boat, I pull the boat out of the water, and the water flows out of the back of the boat through the plug that we never put in. So, my grandson's got a kick out of that, and then, the youngest one, who is quite a guy, I said, turn on the bilge pump, so he puts on the bilge pump, and the water comes pumping out, and then he shuts it off, and he says, no more water coming out of the bilge pump, so. I walk around that side of the boat, and as I got to where the bilge pump is, he turns it back on, and the water came out. Anyways, it was very entertaining. I blame my wife, with the advice of Woody, because Woody said, the first major responsibility is to put the plug in, so anyway.
Those are the rules of the water, apparently.
We had a good time, and I will never forget to put the plug in again. I know it does, right. Because when you slow down, you got a problem, so.
Hey, I think we should give your grandson credit for knowing what that pump name was, because if you said that to me, I would have just laughed at you.
I know, Brett.
I thought he was going to tell me that they had thrown out an anchor and didn't pull it in.
No, no, no.
Hey, we're keeping an eye on him with that.
With that, we're right at 8:30, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless somebody else has anything to say.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion is adjourned. Thank you for everybody that watched, and thank you, Cable, what a great job you do.
Thank you, Cable. Have a good weekend.
They were busy.
Yep, they were busy. Okay, thank you.